Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 7th City Council meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Klein. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing, please. We have an invocation by Pastor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Let's pray. Well, Father, I ask first for wisdom for our mayor and our council tonight as they govern our community, as they protect the unique traditional values that make Gilroy so special. I also pray for wisdom for our public safety officials, for our police and fire chief, as they bring their leadership to protecting this great place that we enjoy. I also pray a special blessing upon all of the staff at City Hall that work behind the scenes. There are so many people in so many layers that make our community great, so bless them all. We pray this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, item 1.4, City Clerk's Report on Posting the Agenda Followed by Roll Call.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The agenda was posted on Thursday, August 3rd at 1:53 PM. Councilmember Armendaris?
Here.
Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar is absent. And Mayor Blankley?
Here.
All right, under Orders of the Day, we have none. Under Employee Introductions, we have none. Under Ceremonial Items, we have none. Presentations to the Council, item 3.1, Parks and Recreation Commission Annual Presentation by Commissioner Luis Ramirez.
It's not me. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. As the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, I get the honor of presenting our State of the Union address, so to speak. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Luis Ramirez. I'm the Chair. I'd like to start off because I think this is a well-written statement and something worth living up to. I do want to go ahead and repeat what our mission statement is. The Parks and Recreation Commission of the City of Gilroy is committed to enhancing the quality of life for its citizens by promoting planning, acquisition, development, and sustainability of parks, trails, cultural, historical, and other recreation areas. The Commission embraces wellness and recreation, park safety, and inclusiveness for all ages and abilities because parks make life better. I think that's very well said, and I think it's worth living up to. So how we go about doing that as a commission is every year we get together and we kind of brainstorm a little bit, and we kind of put together a work plan. And this is a short list of that work plan. We have a longer list, but these are the main items that we work with. One of the things that I take great pride in is that every commissioner is involved in regularly walking every single park in our city. I think the parks in our city are one of the greatest assets that we have. And we take that seriously, so we walk, all of us do, on a regular basis. And we come back every month, and we usually report to a representative of the city, which we haven't had one lately, but where we think there might be issues that need to be addressed. Safety issues, if we see graffiti, if we see, you know, parks that need some maintenance. So we do that on a regular basis. It takes up a good part of our time. We also made a commitment to participating in Citywide events. In the Commissioner's there, you see a picture of Commissioner Graham and Benson, who attended the annual California Parks and Recreation Council meeting they had in Morgan Hill. We're committed to doing that. There's a few of us going to be attending a seminar later on this month, the Silicon Valley Bike Council, so we do that. One of the things that was a hot issue this year was dog parks. I know it's come before the City Council. It's our pickleball issue of the year so far. And we, on a regular basis, get people visiting our meetings because they have concerns, real concerns, about our dog parks. I know we've come before the city and asked for some money, and we've got some, and we're very grateful, but our dog parks could use some work. And we're going to make some small, hopefully incremental improvements, but I think our dogs' parks is something that needs some attention, and we're looking at that. We annually host an Arbor Day, and I'll talk a little bit about that later and why we do that. Another duty that we have is we oversee VTA Measure B Bicycle and Education Encouragement Funds. And that's a little bit tricky because we're working with a county, and we have representatives, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. But those are some of our duties. There are more, but that's kind of our main focus when we get together on a monthly basis. Here's a picture of Arbor Day, and Madam Mayor is there with some council members, and that was, last year that was done at Sunrise Park. And I think we planted at least half a dozen trees or something like that, and they're beautiful. Every year they bloom, and they look great, and they're growing, and they add to the beauty of Sunrise Park. And that's a beautiful park. We've done in the past that Gilroy Golf Course, Farrell Avenue. I don't know if anybody's been to Farrell Avenue. It's a big, open field with nothing on it. Hopefully, we'll put something on that line, but it's a nice park. Rainbow Park, Carrot Hills, San Isidro. For 2023, we're in the process of planning that event. I'm sure you'll be aware when we go about doing that. We do that because that's an important thing for us to do because Gilroy has been designated as a Tree City USA since 1979. So that's important for us to keep that up, keep that designation. Bicycle and pedestrian duties. So this year, we did host an Energizer Station in Christmas Hill Park. Gilroy did very well in participating to Bike Wherever Day this year. In fact, I think we were first place in all of the Bay Area. So we came on number one ahead of Menlo Park and some of these other cycling cities. So we did really well. So there's some cyclists here in Gilroy that we need to pay attention to. This Commissioner Graham and I and Adam will be attending the Silicon Valley Bike Council Summit that's happening in Mountain View later on this month, hoping to find some ways we can get some more funds to make biking, walking through Gilroy a little bit safer. So that's what we're doing on that side of the fence. I think if I had to summarize where we stand as, my year of experience now with the Commission, where we stand from a Parks and Recreation standpoint, I think the city and its partners do an excellent job of maintaining our parks. As I said earlier, our parks are one of the greatest assets we have. You go on any weekend at any of the big parks, and you're going to see adults and children playing baseball, soccer. There's going to be people walking their dogs. There's blow-up jumpy houses all over the place, people picnicking. Gilroy citizens love their parks. They really do. And I think we do a good job of maintaining our parks. On the recreation side, I think we also do, I think with, you know, with kind of strained resources, three, four people at the most, just went over some statistics, we're going to be up 5% this year over 2022 on total participants in recreational programs. We're up 60% in adaptive need participants and 60% in our senior citizens. That is, and senior citizens are the fastest-growing population segment in Gilroy. So that said, I think we're doing a great job. Can we do better? Absolutely. I think the greatest opportunity slash threat is that I'd really like to see Parks and Rec have their own source of funding. As we all know right now, we get funded through the general fund. So we're at, you know, unfortunately, just hoping that the administration can release some funds for Parks and Rec. Back to my mission statement, to develop, to acquire, to maintain, make the parks a little bit safer. We get people coming in. Los Angeles is a big issue this year, and it'd be nice to spend some funds on making that park safer for our citizens. Recreation programs, being able to offer more scholarships for the kids from the East Side and the West Side. More programs for teens. I've heard three or four parents come to me saying, there's not enough activities for teens. And I think if with a secure source of funding, that would make it easier. So I welcome the opportunity to speak with you individually, as a council, come in later time to figure out how we can do that. I have a couple of ideas, but I would like to be able to pursue that. So I thank you for letting me present tonight.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Councilmember Armendaris?
Thank you, Chair Ramirez. And thanks to you and the other commissioners who voluntarily dedicate your time to this. And I agree that we do have beautiful parks, and I think they're pretty well-maintained. But I wanted to ask, is there a plan for next year's work plan or maybe something in the works to assess the need for more parks or what our neighborhoods who don't have parks, how we can assess that is? Is that something in the works?
It's not currently in the works. I would support something like that. Again, with limited funds to, you know, expand and build on parks, that's, again, we're just, we're a committee that provides support. We don't have any really decision-making. I said, do so funds, we don't have any decision-making as well. We can ask. But I think there's a world of opportunity on, like, look at the ranch side of Christmas Hill. We got all that dirt. That's, you can do all kinds of stuff with that dirt out there. Pickleball courts, a dog park that's built to standard that we can all live with. And there are probably areas of our city that could use neighborhood parks. So I would support something like that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Luis.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the numbers included in there, too. Luis is a fellow CPA. Retired accountant. Very good job. Okay, moving on to item 3.2, Public Comment by Members. This is for members of the public who want to comment on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have two speaker cards. First one is Ron Kirkish, followed by Robert Sabetta.
All right, everyone, you have three minutes each.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community. I was pleasantly surprised at the result we got from the LAFCO 2021 hearing. I thought that was great. It wasn't 100%, but it was beginning. And from what I could gather after listening to it all, there's still an opportunity to actually address the rest of it. I would like to really thank a few people. Cindy McCormick did an excellent job. I watched her on two occasions, and she is a great hire. Andy Faber also did a great job. Thank you, Andy. Mayor, you spoke. Deion, you spoke, and thank you so much. You did an excellent job speaking to the community. I was very impressed with, actually, I'm going to say it. I was very impressed with Sylvia Arenas, Mr. Milton, and also the alternate, Mark Turner. They really went to bat for our community, and we owe Mark Turner a great debt of gratitude for his help on two occasions now. Cindy Arenas, she really went to bat for us, and so did Milton. Mr. Hilton, his cohorts on the Green Belt Alliance and Green Foothills, they wanted us to, they wanted LAFCO to completely reject it. That was what LAFCO staff and Ms. Needley wanted, but they said, no, you fought for it. You said, we need this territory for future expansion, and you effectively convinced them. So I'm very, very proud of all you guys. I don't know why anybody would want to deny it. It's something that's very, very important for our community, for our future, the way it grows. So again, I appreciate it. Thank you all. I wish Cindy was here to hear what I had to say, but in any case, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, next speaker?
Robert Sabetta.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and public. I wanted to address something that's off-topic, but it is important to discuss. Recently, well, last month, we had a release of a very popular movie, Sound of Freedom, and it stars many important, not important, but just actors that really dedicated their time and effort to a cause, which is human trafficking. And it's based on a former U.S. government agent, Tim Ballard. Now, in my opinion, he is a real-life Captain America who sacrificed his career, his family, and livelihood to save children in foreign countries. And there was a bill that was being proposed and is being passed currently in the state, Senate Bill 14, Serious Felonies, Human Trafficking. And there were some facts here that I did want to address, and I think we all should know this. California consistently ranks number one in the nation in the number of human trafficking cases reported to the National Human Trafficking Hotline. Human trafficking is among the world's fastest-growing criminal enterprise and is estimated to be a $150 billion a year global industry, which is terrifying. And I do believe it will surpass drug trafficking within the next decade. And why am I saying this? Well, it's important that we are aware of what's going on, and, you know, the fact that our state is, it's a beautiful state, the golden state of California. I'm born and raised here, and it's really sad that we're at this statistic of, you know, inhumanity. Anyway, the point of what I'm trying to make is that, you know, the sweater that I'm wearing right now, freedom is not free, and that is true. And Tim Ballard, which Sound of Freedom is based on, not just him, but the children who were victim and exploited in this unfortunate series of events, they deserve more. And the movie, in my opinion, it's based on awareness, but not just that, but action. And sometimes that action could be as something simple as having something to say. Anyway, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Are there any other speakers?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Then we'll move on to reports of council members. Before we do, I want to let the council know that later in our agenda, I mean, as you know, we will be having some training from our city attorney, which includes our council norms. And so with respect to council member reports, I'm going to do my best to remind us all that this dais is for each of us to report on the boards on which we sit and how we are representing the city. Okay, the dais is not for personal values, personal positions. It's not a personal platform. And everybody's been, I think, maybe walking that line now and then, so I just want everyone to know that I'm going to do my best to make sure that we all try to use the public dais for the public, which is for this council. We are the entire elected body and not for just individual positions. Okay, Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Armendaris?
No report.
All right, Councilmember Marks?
No report.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. From the VTA PAC, I'm going to provide some daily ridership for Gilroy's VTA routes. These are daily boarding numbers from June 2023. The Rapid 568 had 633 boardings, Express 121 had 47, the Frequent 68 had 3,800, the Local 84 had 78, the Local 85 had 111, and the Local 86 had 66. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, before the last Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors meeting, staff held a study session to review the emissions accounting mechanism used in the energy industry, which detailed how the agency is meeting its 100% clean goals on an annual basis. The board also discussed the results of a stress test analysis that informs the target levels for the Silicon Valley Clean Energy financial reserves. Since Silicon Valley Clean Energy was founded in 2017, the agency has delivered on its commitment to providing customers with 100% clean energy on an annual basis. Emissions accounting on an annual basis has been the industry standard. However, there's a growing interest in how hourly matching of clean supply to customer demand may help California's effort to transition to a carbon-free grid by 2045. Staff is currently working to develop a pathway study to understand the implications of various clean standards and accounting methodologies for the organization moving forward. SVCE continues to meet state clean energy procurement obligations with its portfolio of renewable and carbon-free resources. SVCE has invested $2.1 billion in renewable projects such as solar plus battery storage, wind, and geothermal energy. While the SVCE energy mix is 100% clean, staff shared that its 2022 power content label will show 72 pounds of carbon dioxide per megawatt hour due to emissions that are largely ascribed to one of its geothermal projects, which is a valuable renewable source that offers clean energy around the clock. With increasing interest to match each hour of the day with clean resources, there will be challenges during certain times, certain hours and times of the year that still rely on natural gas. SVCE recognizes that during this transition, statewide transition to get 100% clean retail sales, we have to balance our pursuit of clean resources with reliability and affordability. To meet the challenges of this changing energy landscape, staff is developing a study to understand how these new clean energy targets may impact its portfolio in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
No report.
Councilmember Tovar is absent, and my report, I know we didn't have very many meetings in July, everybody, but Caltrain, I want to give the final numbers of the survey. Last time, the last meeting, I said it was 1,472, and the final count for survey participants was 1,552. There were two parts of that survey, results of that survey that I found interesting, even though the results of the survey are not official yet, they've not been publicly released. When they are, of course, everyone on the council is going to be getting those, and we're all going to participate in the yay happiness of where that goes. But 85% of people who responded said that they do not travel farther than Santa Clara County Line or just beyond the Santa Clara County Line. So most of the people responding to this survey, 85%, are not, it's not about going to San Francisco. It's not about going that far. It's traveling within the county, getting to work or getting to places within the county. And the other thing that was interesting to me, because I've had at least a handful of people tell me that they really could use an earlier train because they're driving to the Santa Teresa Station or Tamian in order to connect to earlier trains, is that, sorry, lost my train of thought, is that it is a later train that more people are requesting and an earlier return. So that surprised me. But again, we will see the official results of all 1,552 responses when Caltrain has them put together. All right, that is my report. Council correspondents? We have none. Future council-initiated items? Okay, seeing none. So we go to boards and commission interviews. Ty, are you going to do any kind of report on this?
No report, but the council does need to accept the late applications that were received after the June, September, I'm sorry, the June 21st deadline.
Yes, so we received a total in the end, a total of nine applications, four of which were submitted by the original, by the due date, and the other five came in later. We have quite a few openings, I mean, certainly more than four, on that commission. So would anyone, is there any discussion or would anyone like to, do we need a motion or just, okay, would anyone like to suggest that we accept all nine? Okay, accept all nine? Does anybody disagree? Leave it at that because it doesn't need to be a formal motion. Okay, then all nine are in as applicants, and so let's go and start. Okay, so note, Ty, you're not going to give any kind of report. So let me just call, okay, I'm going to just call the first three names, and if three are not here, then I'll move on to someone else. Okay, is Crystal here? Okay, if you could want to come up and take a seat here. And is it Kuber? Okay, if you could come take a seat up here, and then Chad. We'll just do three at a time, three, three, and maybe we could squeeze in, well, we'll see how many we have here. Okay, so thank you to all for applying, or anyone who's an incumbent, we totally appreciate you being here. We all have your applications. We've all hopefully read them. So I'm just here to start a discussion, and then I will ask council if they have anything in particular to ask, but I'll just start, I'll start Chad, and we'll go down here. And if you could just, if you could try to limit your answer to a couple of minutes, you know, that just points out what you would like us to know most about why you're applying and what being on this commission will mean to you.
So I'm applying because I'm very, I really like civic engagement, and I believe that the youth council would be a great opportunity to do that. And, well, I know youth is going through a lot of challenges right now, especially after COVID, like mental health, and I believe that they need people to, like, reach out, and I think that maybe, like, we can get counselors, and I want to help try to implement those. And, well, like, like civic, like, but yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Krista Rosia, and the reason why I would want to be a part of this commission board is just like how recently it was mentioned by Luis. The youth isn't really fully involved in the community, and the youth isn't really fully represented within the community. And some previous past works that I have done within our community of Gilroy is being a part of the library, bringing back coding for girls, and representing that youth empowerment within girls and the career of technology. So that's something that I really want to point out. Not only that, but I am very ambitious for the youth of Gilroy, and I feel that if you have me in this board, I will do the most possible, like, I'll go out of my way to form those connections. And I have previous leadership roles that prove that type of experience that I have, and I just really want to be there for the youth, represent the youth, and be the youth's voice within this community.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Kebeshara, and the reason that I would like to join the Youth Commission is because ever since COVID, the youth within Gilroy has been slowly starting to lose traction, and I would like to support that by whatever I could do. For example, helping plan events or even adding, adding like more attendees to each event that I can. What I would like to do to support the Gilroy youth, I would like to do, that's all.
All right, thank you. Okay, this is Kuber, right? Okay, council, does anyone, I want to make sure we ask the same questions of each of the applicants. Does anyone have a particular question that, beyond what I just asked, to ask them all? Okay, you guys, thank you. We'll be, yeah, please come to the next meeting. That will be more exciting for you probably because then, yeah, but I just can't thank you enough for taking the time to do what you did, which is to apply and to be here tonight. So thank you. Okay, Lavender? And Maya? And Zara? See, you kind of love youth commissioners. They're all here. Okay, so same question to all of you. Lavender, I know you're an incumbent, but if you could please just, you know, reiterate to us why you want to be, continue on the commission and what it means to you.
Well, I've had the privilege of serving on the Youth Commission for the past two years, as a commissioner for the last year, and then as Chair the last year. And I feel like the biggest takeaway I have from just the entire experience is how empowering it is because from volunteering at, you know, these community-wide events and just interacting with so many of the youth, and a lot of these are like little kids, one-on-one, I feel like it just really opened my eyes to how much impact we have the power to make, and I think that's a really inspiring thing to be a part of, especially at such a young age. And yeah, I would just love the opportunity to continue doing that, and I'm just eager to continue my journey with the Youth Commission. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, my name is May Biret. I'm a junior at GECA, and I would love to give back to the community. I've lived in Gilroy all my life, so 16 years as of the right now, and I've seen all the changes after COVID, before COVID, everything like that. And I would love to give back the way that Gilroy has affected me, so that's, of course, positively. And I would love to give back to the youth community specifically, just because I am part of that community. I do see a lack of connectivity among the youth, and I would love to change that through the implementation of a lot of programs and maybe clubs that are school district-wide, not school-specific, and I would love to do that in my two-year term. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Zara?
Hi, my name is Zara. I'm a sophomore, oh, I'm going to be a sophomore at GECA. And the real reason I really want to be a part of this Youth Commission is because I really want to give back to the city, as Maya said. Because of all my 15 years of living here, I've always had support from everyone around me. And especially going through my teenage years, I feel like we all, as a youth, have had hard times. For example, my father had a heart transplant in 2020, and it was really hard on me during that time. And I actually had a lot of people, including parents and kids and students and even teachers, just support me in this way that I could never imagine, and it was just, and now that I look back on it, it was amazing. And I really want to be a part of something that can also give back to people. And I also want to be able to represent my own culture as a minority, as an Asian, and because I've been, recently in this year, I went through a bit of a tough rock, I guess you could say, of Asian hate crimes, to the point that I had to go to a police office. And I would love to thank Officer Larkin. I know he's not here right now, but he was a great help and, of course, an amazing member of this community. So I also would like to help give back support to all people of the youth in our city.
Wow, thank you. All right, thank you all, really. Thanks for being here. Thanks for applying. Come back to the next meeting. Okay, that leaves us with, okay, am I going to Okay, that leaves us with, okay, am I going to say this right, Tanmay? Okay, and Aiden? Is Aiden here? And Said? Okay. So Said. All right, so the question, the question was, same to them, is number one, thank you, and number two, what, why did you apply, and, you know, what do you hope to, what do you hope to accomplish?
My name, my name's Stan May, I'm a freshman at Montavista, at Christian School, and I would like to help out the city and the council by like cyber stuff. I completed Harvard CS50 course over the summer, and basically, in the United States, 422 million people are, are involved in cyber crimes in the, in the United States alone, and I was hoping to like teach people on like how you could be, you could avoid cyber, cyber crimes with, I started a company, and it's not a company yet, but a program where you could protect your internet and your household with a pro, with the program, so you wouldn't be affected with like viruses and crimes like that, this after COVID hit, a lot of cyber crimes was like gross, and that affected a lot of families, including my neighbor, and I helped him with the program I made, and I was hoping I could teach people on how to avoid cyber problems, and I, I did the Police Youth Academy, and I was hoping like we could like in the future, we are, there's already like a cyber, cyber talk in it, but I was hoping like we could get more into depth with it, and help the youth with knowledge, and just know what to do if something like this happens.
Thank you. Oh, go, sorry. Are you finished? Okay, I didn't mean to cut you off, I thought you were, okay, all right. Go ahead, Said?
My name's Said Mustafa, I'm currently a senior at Christopher High School, and my goal with this youth committee would be to leave a mark on the city of Gilroy as a whole. I feel like we could do this by steering the youth in a whole different direction, because I know a lot of them, they don't have really like a lot of options in the city of Gilroy, they really just like resort to drugs and alcohol, but I feel like we could change that by holding more activities and events, whether that be at parks, or through the schools, I feel like we could just make a huge change in the youth community as a whole. Yeah.
It's going to be tough, you guys. All right, thank you both. I don't want to go through it all, I was going to say, do you have any questions for us, but then that would bring everybody else back, so I'm assuming you're good? Everybody good? All right, thank you all very, very, very much. We really need you. Okay, that brings us to item eight, which is Training on FPPC Regulations, Conflicts of Interest, and Council Norms, and that's going to be by our city attorney, Andy. And we'll see. Yep, I know.
Okay, is this working?
Yes, it is.
Mike, okay? Well, I'm sorry all the youth commissioners left, I thought they were going to stay for this, but what are you going to do? I guess they're learning early. Anyway, this is the, this is, turn it off. This is the second of three trainings we're going to be doing, this one focuses on conflicts of interest of various kinds, and to a little bit, or a lesser extent, on council norms and certain aspects that have come up recently. More particularly, there we go, we're going to talk about the FPPC financial conflicts, we're going to talk a little bit about common law conflicts, which don't relate to the FPPC at all. We're going to talk briefly about AB 1439, which we've mentioned before too, and the council has discussed, which is the law about campaign contributions disqualifying you from voting after you get one, or before you get one, and then also about the council norms and certain selected topics. First major topic, and we're going to spend most of my time on, is the FPPC. The FPPC was created by the Political Reform Act of 1974, which was an initiative, actually, passed by the voters almost 50 years ago. It deals almost exclusively with financial conflicts of interest. Here's the basic rule in bold, "A public official at any level shall not make, participate in making, or in any way attempt to use the public official's official position to influence a governmental decision in which the official knows, or has reason to know the official has a financial interest." And that's kind of restated by the FPPC to read the second bullet point, which is, "The council, a council member or an official, has a potentially disqualifying interest if it is reasonably foreseeable that a decision will have a material financial effect on one or more of a council member's financial interests." Now, this is an incredibly technical area, there are pages and pages and pages of regulations defining every one of these terms. I'm not going to go through them all, because it would drive us all crazy, but I do want to alert you to the basic concepts and how this is analyzed. The FPPC suggests a four-step test for determining whether you, as a council member, have a conflict of interest, and I should say this applies not only to council members, although we're here in the council chambers, it also applies to all boards and commissions, and it actually applies to city employees and officers as well. The first step, the four step, four questions that are asked, the first one, "Is it reasonably foreseeable that the government decision will have a financial effect on any of the public official's financial interest?" Second step, "If yes, will the reasonably foreseeable financial effect be material?" Three, "Will the material financial effect be indistinguishable from its effect on the public generally?" In other words, if the effect is on everybody in the city, for example, then it doesn't disqualify a council member. And fourth, "Is the public official making or participating in making, or influencing the government decision?" Those are four separate questions, all of which relate to the question of whether any given situation involving financial interests is a conflict. Step one, "Is it reasonably foreseeable that it will have a financial effect on any of the official's financial interests?" The major categories of financial interests have very specific detailed requirements. The FPPC outlines five kinds of interests, so these are, these are the five. The first is a business entity, in other words, if you own a business, or work for a business, have a management role in a business, or have a direct investment in a business. This can occur, for example, with an employee of a business, we had a council member a few years ago, who worked for a large company, that company wanted to develop some property. It was clear the council member could not vote on that development application, but this was back in the days of the RDO, as you may recall, which was kind of a beauty contest to allot development points, and is, was somewhat of a zero-sum game. So the question was, could the council member vote on the other projects, not on the ones of his own employer, and we actually got an FPPC opinion on that issue. The second one, and this is the one we see most often really, is real property, and that applies if you have a direct or indirect interest of over $2,000, and includes, includes property that you might lease, for example, if you are renting your home and living there, but not on a month-to-month tenancy, but you can still have a financial interest just from the rental. Source of income, and that's a question of whether the interest involves a person or entity that gives the official more than $500 within 12 months. This can be an employer, for example, or it can be some other kind of interest, it could be a nonprofit that one serves on the board of and gets a stipend, for example. Gifts, the contribution limit now is $590 within a 12-month period, that's the amount that counts for the, for the financial interest. It started out less than that, it gets adjusted every two years. And then personal finances, this is kind of a catch-all, and this says, forgetting about the other ones for the moment, "If the decision might result in the official or an immediate family member receiving a financial benefit or loss of $500 or more in a 12-month period, that's a disqualifying financial interest potentially." So these are five different sources, each of these is backed up by three or four pages of regulations that you can read if you're interested. And actually, I should add, if in fact you ever look into this, on the FPPC website, all this stuff is laid out in a pretty clear way, although the regulations are horribly complex and technical. So the next question is, if you have a financial interest, is it foreseeable that there will be an effect on it? And the FPPC divides these into two categories, the first is, is your interest explicitly involved in the decision-making? For example, your, your employer is asking for a entitlement, or you're asking for an entitlement, or a family member, or a source of income to you is seeking a contract with the city, that's where the source of, of income, or, or the financial interest is specifically involved in the decision. Not explicitly involved, this is real legal waffling at its best, I'll just read it to you, this is great stuff. "A financial effect need not be likely to be considered reasonably foreseeable. In general, if the financial effect can be recognized as a realistic possibility, and more than hypothetical or theoretical, it is reasonably foreseeable." So this is a pretty wishy-washy definition, as you can tell. So, step two is materiality. If you have an interest that's involved, is the effect on your interest material? And again, the regulations have detailed standards for each category, and in each case, if the property or your business interest is directly involved, for example, is an applicant, or is seeking to do business with the city, or is under investigation, various kinds of involvements there can be, it would be material. So the interesting ones, of course, are where your financial interest is not directly involved. For a business entity, in other words, a business that you have an investment in, or perhaps you own, of course, if it's the applicant, it is material. The regulations, if it's indirectly involved, in other words, it's not the applicant, but your business might be affected by a city decision, there are various threshold amounts that are in the regulations. For example, if it would affect the profits of the business, or the revenue by more than $1 million, that's material. If it would cause losses of more than $250,000, that's material. There are special rules for real estate brokers and insurance agents, and various, and some other categories as well. So this is something where if a source of income to you, or a, a, a personal property interest of yours would be indirectly involved, you may have to look at very specific numbers to figure out if that's deemed to be material. These numbers are somewhat arbitrary, in fact, they're completely arbitrary. I have told the council before, I think, when the FPPC changed its regulations, that what they did is they threw out one set of regulations that were arbitrary and technical, and adopted another set of regulations that were equally arbitrary and equally technical, but we deal with whatever they have. There is an exception if you're a shareholder in a public company, so if you have less than $25,000 of stock in a publicly traded company, and that company, for example, is seeking a land use permit or entitlement from the city, that's not material. This is the one we deal with most often, the real property donut rule. And this, this donut rule used to be in the FPPC regs, then about seven or eight years ago, they took it out and put a new rule in, and now, a couple of years ago, they brought it back. So the idea is, if you imagine a donut, so here's the donut, there's a hole in the middle, and then there's the outside of the donut. The hole in the middle is a, is a land radius of 500 feet, so the property that the city, for example, is in front of the city for an entitlement, is at the center of the hole in the donut, and if you own, you or planning commissioners, own property within the 500 feet, it's presumed to have a material effect on your property. That can be rebutted, in theory, by clear and convincing evidence, to the contrary, but what's clear and convincing evidence? It's not quite reasonable doubt, it's more, that's the criminal standard, it's more than preponderance, which is the civil standard, it's something that in practice is virtually impossible to do. So that's why we say the 500-foot rule is essentially an absolute rule. Going down to the third bullet point, that's the outside of the donut, the donut goes from 500 to 1,000 feet, 1,000 feet or more is outside the donut, and that has the opposite presumption. In other words, the presumption is, if the city is granting an entitlement to property, and you own a house or other property more than 1,000 feet away, there is no material effect, that's the presumption. That can be rebutted by clear and convincing evidence, again. Now, how would that happen? I mean, it's a kind of hard concept to understand, somebody would have to challenge you, the council member, for example, or possibly challenge the city's decision, on the basis that a council member should have disqualified himself or herself, and then somehow prove that there was an effect on their property, even though it's more than 1,000 feet away. In past years, we actually, with slightly different rules, we have actually, on occasion, gotten appraisals to try to figure out if there is a conflict, but it's not something that is normally done, it's expensive, it's questionable whether it would work at all. So, the second bullet point is the donut, that's the property between 500 and 1,000 feet, and there, the effect of the city action may or may not be material. And the FPPC gives a bunch of issues here, or effects, for example, the parcel, your parcel's development potential, the income potential of your parcel, is it affected by the entitlement or the, the government decision on the subject parcel? And then various other things, like alteration of traffic levels, intensity of use, parking, views, privacy, noise level. We had to get an opinion a few years ago for a council member who owned a house, and on another street, not his street, neighbors were complaining about traffic and wanted traffic calming, and then other neighbors on another street were complaining that if you calmed that street, it would yield traffic on different streets, including possibly the council member's one. So the issue was, was there a material impact on the council member's property from doing traffic calming on another street that didn't really connect very well? It was a complicated matter that ultimately hinged on the fact that when you actually measured carefully the distance between his property and the closest street thing, it was a little over 500 feet. So actually, the whole, the whole problem went away, because it was like 508 feet. The measurement, by the way, is property line to property line, it's not house to house. However, hypothetically, let's say you owned a condominium, you don't look at the common areas, you look at where your condominium itself is. So even though the, the association may own property that's hundreds and hundreds of feet away, closer to the subject property, you don't look at that. But this is, this real property issue is the one that we see most often, the city clerk, I believe, has maps that show it for each person's property, and if there's ever an issue, you should raise it in advance, if you think you're within 500 feet of a property that's in front of the city, for an application of some sort. Source of income materiality. If the, if the source of income is an individual, and the government decision will affect his assets or liabilities by greater than $1,000, that's material. If it's, there are special rules for nonprofit or business entity that again relate to the amount of assets or liabilities or revenue that will be achieved. Again, this is an incredibly complicated area, but if there is someone you know that is a source of income to you, and they have any matter in front of the city, you should think about this issue, and we can look at it. Okay, so that was a materiality question. The third question is, "Is the financial effect on your financial interest indistinguishable from its effect on the public generally?" Because if it is, then it's not a conflict, even though there's an effect on you. The FPPC defines public generally, it's kind of a crazy definition, there are specific provisions about things that don't create conflicts, like public service and utilities, licensing fees, some neighborhood effects like parking and nuisance abatement also. We actually see this most generally having to do with general plans, or specific plans, because the question is, if the city adopts a whole general plan, it affects the entire city, and it naturally may affect a, a council member or planning commissioner's property as well. Typically, in that case, there's not an issue as it relates to a, a, a special effect. However, we have had situations, for example, in prior housing elements, where it calls for very specific rezonings of particular properties, where if you live right next to one of those properties, there can be an effect. And in that case, there's something that we'll talk about a little later, it's sometimes possible to segment the decision. In other words, the council member can't vote on the specific redesignation of the, of the local property, but can vote on the overall plan. local property, but can vote on the overall plan and the policies of the plan itself. So the FPPC does allow that. So the last step, assuming that the effect is not, that the effect is distinguishable from the effect on the public, is are you making or participating in a government decision? The clearest one is when you vote on something, you're voting on, that is participating in a decision. Voting to appoint somebody, if you, for example, appoint somebody to a board or commission that pays stipends, and that person is a source of income, that can be a disqualifying vote as well. Entering into contracts, there are a bunch of different things that would, clearly are making a government decision. You participate in a government decision if you influence it in a way that doesn't have significant review by other people. So this can apply to staff. This can apply to commissions that don't actually have decision-making power to actually make things happen. But for example, if the commission's recommendations are invariably followed historically, and they never get looked at, they get rubber stamped, then that would apply that the commission, in fact, is making such a decision, even though they're technically not. And it could apply to staff members as well, who are issuing contracts or entitlements. So if, if, if you've gone through all four steps and you have a conflict, what then? In bold, I put down here, it's not wrongful to have a conflict. It doesn't mean you made a mistake, it doesn't mean you're a bad person. It's not a bad thing to have a conflict, it just means you can't vote on something and have to recuse yourself. So don't think about conflicts as being negative in the sense of some sort of moral, you know, moral failing or anything like that. It just means that under these FPPC rules, it would not be appropriate for you to vote or participate in making a certain decision. So if you have a conflict, here's what you have to do. You have to publicly identify orally at a meeting, prior to the consideration of the item, that you have this conflict and what it is. It has to be more than just, I have a conflict. It has to explain who it's with, what's the cause of the conflict. If it involves real property, you have to give the address of the real property, except your house. You don't have to do that for your house. But the standard is, it must be done in sufficient detail to be understood by the public, exactly what the nature of the conflict is. You have to refrain from discussing or voting on the matter. You have to recuse yourself and leave the room until after the discussion or vote or any other disposition of the matter, unless it's on the consent calendar, in which case you have to identify the conflict, but you can sit here and not vote on it. There's a strange rule, I call it the new rule here. The rule, there are two halves to it, actually. If you arrive, if you leave a meeting before the item that you had a conflict on is on the agenda, but for some reason you leave early, you have to explain your conflict anyway, even though you're gone and you won't be voting on it. Similarly, and this is the new rule, if you arrive at a meeting after the item has been voted on, you also have to explain your conflict, even though you weren't at the meeting when the vote was taken. This apparently is designed to try to prevent council members who may time their appearance on the council to try to avoid talking about a conflict. But it's an odd rule that nobody would, I think, normally think applies, but it does. There are some exceptions if you have an FPPC conflict. One is segmentation, and that goes into what I was talking about earlier, where a decision may be divisible, divisible into two parts, and the part that you have a conflict on can be handled without you, or without the commissioner or the official, and then you can come back in and vote on the other part. And as I say, this typically arises with general plans or rezonings. In addition, there is an exception where you can appear as a member of the public regarding a property that you or your family wholly own. So for example, if your neighbor needs a use permit for something, and your house is literally next door, or within 500 feet, you can appear and oppose that project. But you can't be on the council, and you can't vote on it, and you can't consider it. However, you could sit, you could stand here and voice your opinion, identifying yourself as a member of the public. So that's always available for wholly owned property. There's also something called a rule of necessity. And that arises because if a council member is disqualified, that person doesn't count towards a quorum. So in other words, as you know, in Gilroy, for example, to pass an ordinance, we need four positive votes to pass an ordinance. Hypothetically, suppose four council members were disqualified, so there are only three who could vote. Then an ordinance could not be passed, but by the rule of necessity, one of the four can come back in and vote. And that, which one of the four would be chosen by lot, actually, and then that person could vote. Now, if that vote was not 4-0, if that vote were 2 to 2 or 3 to 1, the ordinance would not pass and necessity would not arise. And it's not a necessity to break a tie. So hypothetically, again, let's say, if the vote is tied, but there's one or two council members who could have voted, but were disqualified, they can't come back in to break a tie. There's a case on the rule of necessity, which is kind of a strange one, that arose in Los Angeles, where exactly this kind of conflict arose. The city council and the city attorney did what I think was completely correct, and that is, they said, there are several disqualified people, let's choose one by lot. That person voted. And the court said, everything they did was proper, but it still invalidated the vote. And the reason it did so was that the actual explanation of what the various members had that caused their conflict was not adequate. In other words, somehow, the public was not informed in an adequate level of detail of exactly why these council members had conflicts. Although they had gone through the absolute proper process of declaring a conflict and then choosing by lot who would vote. It's a peculiar case, and when you read a case like that, you think there's more to it than that. You know, there's something else going on that, that sort of got the interest of the judges, because it's a peculiar one. In addition, another exception where you could vote even having a conflict could be ministerial matters. Ministerial matters are matters that come before a board or commission or council, where you don't have discretion to say no. You essentially have to say yes. This is occurring now more and more with some of these housing cases. Some of the state housing laws have declared that certain aspects of housing approvals are ministerial, meaning that if the application complies with various provisions, it cannot be turned down. So if a true ministerial project somehow needs a council vote anyway, a disqualified member could still vote. I don't think that's going to happen very often, but it is there. Okay, finally, if you have, if you think you might have an FPPC conflict, let us know as soon as possible. And the reason is, as I mentioned, the regulations are very technical and very complicated. And we can help you analyze it. We can't represent you. City attorneys cannot represent council members on these matters. And even if you hired another attorney, you can't rely on advice of council if the FPPC, for some reason, decides you are in error. It's a very strange situation where we feel, it's frustrating for us, because council members expect us, you know, to help them work these things out. We can help you, but we can't say, having helped you, okay, here's the answer, it's okay. We'd like to be able to say that, but we're not empowered by the FPPC to do that. The only way you can really get a full immunity is to get a formal letter from the FPPC, and in which case you can rely on their letter. It's kind of like getting certain formal tax advice from the IRS, but not informal advice. You can't rely on, these letters are all public, but you can't rely on letters written to other people, even though you might think they're very similar. So it's a, and it's very difficult, if a council member comes up to talk to me at the start of the meeting and says, oops, I just thought of something, this is a problem, and you were huddling, trying to figure out, is it a conflict or not? So these things are often quite difficult to analyze. Okay, that concludes my discussion of the FPPC. I want to move on to common law conflicts, but does anybody have any FPPC questions? Or have I beaten you all into submission here?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that. Before we go into the next subject? I want to say, IRS letters even written to you are not, you cannot rely upon them, so, yeah.
There is that problem, I understand.
No, yeah, they don't have to stand by what they say. Okay, go ahead.
Anybody have any, no, okay. There's another category of conflicts that are called common law conflicts. And these are not financial conflicts typically. They usually have nothing to do with finances, although they may have to do with effect on property. And that has to do with quasi-judicial applications. We've talked about this issue before, but generally speaking, votes that you take are either deemed by law to be legislative actions or quasi-judicial actions. The legislative actions is most of what you do. For example, you adopt a general plan, that's legislative. You vote to appoint people to a commission, that's legislative. Think, most of what you do is legislative. You vote on contracts, that's legislative. But there are categories of actions where you have to act like judges. These are actions like conditional use permits or variances, whereby law, there has to be a public hearing, you have to listen to evidence, you have to decide based upon the evidence, and due process considerations apply. That's why we reveal ex parte applications. Because an applicant, subject to one of these proceedings, is entitled to have an unbiased set of judges, or in this case, council members, who base their decision upon evidence submitted at the hearing or in writing, but not upon other evidence that nobody knows. In particular, not upon ex parte contacts with either side, either the applicant or opponents or anybody else. So there are cases that have decided, held that an applicant did not get due process, where council members had a conflict, or took positions that were overly opinionated, shall we say. So this is, this is a very important issue. And here are some of the cases. Woody's, a council member appealed a matter to the council, which was allowed in that city. He argued against it extensively, and this is very interesting, and he voted to turn it down, and it was turned down. And the court says that he should have recused himself because he had such a bias against the project that the hearing made no difference. One of the, this is an interesting thing, that one of the factors that the appellate court looks at, they say, Hen, that's the council member, gave an extraordinarily well-organized, thoughtful, and well-researched presentation why the planning commission needed to be overturned. The speech, in fact, was so well-organized, well-researched, and thoughtful, it seemed to be extemporaneous, it seemed unlikely to be extemporaneous. And he admitted that fact at the end of the meeting. He admitted that he had prepared his remarks before the meeting based on a, quote, "careful review and my own independent diligence before this meeting started." So this was a case of a council member who was so well-prepared, the court said, wait a minute, you didn't, you didn't listen to the hearing. You had made up your mind, and you admitted you had made up your mind before the hearing, and even written your decision before the hearing. This is an unusual case, that doesn't happen very often. But it is sort of a warning that if, in fact, you have made up your mind in advance, and it's apparent to a court that you've done that, then the decision might be overturned. Nasha versus Los Angeles is one where a planning commissioner wrote an anonymous article against the project, and then sent some letters about it, again, all anonymously, and then voted to reject the project on appeal to the commission. The court vacated the commission's decision because they said, the planning commissioner had denied due process to the applicant by taking this position when it became known who had written this anonymous article. Another one of these cases, I won't go into detail, but among other things, a council member expressed his disapproval by urinating on the applicant's property several times. And the court said, wait a minute, that clearly shows a bias, that should not be allowed, and decided he should not have voted. There was more, too, but that was just the part I can talk about here. Okay, I'm switching gears again to the third subject, which is to talk briefly about the Levine Act, AB 1439. This is a peculiar law, it has to do with campaign contributions. And it used to apply only to a planning commissioner who ran for council and lost. Now, you think, why do you need a law to apply to a planning commissioner who runs for council and lost, and nobody else? The state has changed the law, so it now applies to elected officials. The reason it used to apply was only to people who lost, was that it basically said that if the official had taken, received a contribution of more than $250 from a party to a, to an application with a financial interest, then the, the commission, then the person could not vote for 12 months. So in other words, if, if, if a contribution received of over $250, then in the next 12 months, that person could not vote. So the reason it only applied to planning commissioners who lost is that if the planning, it only applied really to candidates. And if the planning commissioner won, they became elected, and so the law didn't apply to them. And it didn't apply to council members because they were elected to begin with. So it was a very peculiar law. However, it now applies to elected and appointed officials and candidates for elective office. So it now, it now has two parts, and it says, if you have received a contribution of over $250 from a party or a participant, and that could be an opponent, in the 12 months prior to the decision regarding an entitlement, you must recuse yourself from participating and refrain from, and refrain from using your position to influence it. So generally speaking, any, on any vote, you are now going to have to think about, did I receive, particularly in election year, did I receive a contribution of more than $250 from someone involved? Because if so, you may have to recuse yourself. There are cure provisions that allow you, if you didn't know you'd received it, or you didn't know that the person had a financial interest who gave it to you, you may be able to give the money back. But it's something you have to think about now constantly. Furthermore, if an entitlement is pending or for 12 months following a decision, you cannot take a contribution of over $250, or direct it to someone else. So this, again, is another serious issue. I am wondering whether some canny developers may try to disqualify council members by making contributions that somehow slipped through the process and then raising them. Anybody who makes such a contribution, by the way, is supposed to disclose, not just the council members, but the actual applicant. So this is a very tricky thing. Again, we're happy if anybody has this issue, with next year being a campaign year, too. I know this issue may arise. Okay, that's the end of that. I'm gonna finish by--
Andy, can I just ask on the other thing? It is over 250, not 250, right?
It's over 250.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm going to talk briefly about a few of the council norms. These are rules that the council has adopted, they're currently about five pages long, they've been amended from time to time, you all adopted them. Most recently, in February of 2022, there were some amendments. And these are basically agreed-upon rules among council members that govern various aspects of behavior. And I'm going to talk about a few of them that somehow have sort of come to the fore in the last year or so. On this slide, we're talking about representing the city. And if a council member speaks, it has to be clear whether that council member is representing the city or not. If a council member addresses another body, the council member should say, although they can use the concept, the name, Gilroy Councilmember, for identification, they have to say, I'm speaking as an individual, not, so as not to be misleading, and make people think they are speaking on behalf of the council. And 511 is similar, and says that no council member should communicate in a manner that appears to come from the city staff or the council, and that suggests a position associated with the city or the knowledge of the council, unless that is, of course, true and the council member is authorized, so to speak. And that also relates to issues about unauthorized use of city letterhead. So that's always something to think about, particularly if you're addressing another agency. And that can be in print or not, it also can have to do with how you portray yourself on a website or on other public media. Here's another council norm having to do with voting. And just for clarification, the first bullet point deals with some definitions. Absence, if you're absent, it simply means you're not there, okay? If you abstain, it means you're present, but you choose for some reason not to vote. If you're disqualified, then you can't participate at all, and obviously can't vote. Abstentions count toward establishing a quorum, but if you're not there, or if you're disqualified, as I mentioned earlier, then your position is not counted for the quorum. So even though you're not voting, you may-- So even though you're not voting, you may deprive the city of a quorum as well. There is a norm on abstention that I just want to repeat here, which says, if a council member abstains on an item, the council member must explain the reason for the abstention. So again, that's a local city rule on that issue. It's not state law, but it is a city rule. And finally, with respect to relations with staff, two things. We have a council norm that essentially says, no council member shall regularly attend commission meetings, except with respect to a matter that might affect the council member individually. As it says, regular attendance may be seen as intimidating or an attempt to use command influence, even though the council member may not be intending that. So you have to be careful in terms of influencing commissions. This arose in Los Gatos about 10 years ago. A council member was actually censured for appearing to attempt to intimidate the planning commission. So it's a real issue, and it's something you should be careful about. In addition, the charter, because we have a city administrator form of government, says that council members may not interfere with the staff running the city, basically, and should address all issues, questions, complaints, et cetera, to the city administrator, pretty much except for routine requests for information from staff or other ways in which the city administrator may say it's okay to contact staff. But basically, the council is supposed to work through the city administrator. This came up in Mountain View some years ago, and a council member actually was fined heavily. And in fact, there was a criminal case brought on the same subject against the sitting council member. So again, this is a, an important caveat. In terms of communications, just two final things here. The first relates to ex-party communication. We already talked about that. They should be disclosed. The second one is really a function of how council members act on the dais. And section 1.16 says, "External communication by council members during meetings, whether through cell phones, laptops, or other devices, creates a perception that private communications are influencing the outcome of decisions." The city would like, I think, to avoid that perception, and that's a reason not to use cell phones or laptops. Actually, the norm goes on to say that if a council member takes a personal call, they should go out of the room. That may not always be possible. That is what's desired, and obviously, the council does not want to create the impression that somehow they are reacting to public comment that's given privately on their phone and isn't really available to everybody else. Finally, a repeated or serious violation can be addressed by censure of a council member. In that case, the council member is entitled to due process of notice and an opportunity to be heard. So censure is an expression of disapproval by the council. It's pretty serious, and that's why there are due process protections for a council member who would be censured. And so we, it's not something, obviously, that the council should do lightly, and I think it never has done on this council. So that concludes my, my presentation, but I'm happy to answer questions if anybody has any.
Andy, I have a question.
Yes.
No, that's all right. Go ahead.
Um, let's go back to abstention. When someone says no vote, is that an abstention?
The, I think the clerk should ask that question, and normally, it would be treated as an abstention.
So that a reason would have to be given why it was a no, why the person's saying-
Yeah, there was a situation in Los Gatos a few years ago where a council member voted not present. And the clerk said, well, is that a no vote or an abstention? And he said, well, no, I'm voting not present because it's though I'm not here, nobody's listening to me. I don't think that was a legal, proper legal vote, and the clerk ultimately put it down as, as a no vote. But in general, anything that isn't a yes or no is an abstention.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one.
Yes.
3.12, you, you did have that on your screen. I think maybe that would warrant a little more explanation from you, because I, I think it might not be clear to all of us what it, what constitutes an attempt to influence any commission, because it was less than three months ago that we just had this, where all of the commissioners were, were contacted by a single council member who was speaking as though the information that was being given was accurate and to be shared and official information.
Right. I, I think the short answer is that that kind of contact, although I'm sure that wasn't the council member's intent, could be seen by commissioners to be intimidated. We've had situations where commissioners have complained that a council member, or a member of the public sometimes, has complained, a council member talked to them, thinking they're just talking to a constituent, and the constituent feels intimidated. Why did this council member seek me out? So I think we have to be very sensitive to the fact that commissions are appointed to do their work, which then may or may not come to the city council's attention, but that they are very sensitive to feeling that you're their bosses, you know, you can appoint them and unappoint them. So they are very sensitive to feeling that they are being leaded on, even if the intent of the council member is not to do that, but simply to share information. So the advice would be not to do that. As I said, command influence, you know, it's a military term, but it's the kind of thing that people see in court marshals where the commander says, I'm not saying anything, but you're sitting there and you're looking glum or whatever, and as a result-
Maybe what I'm asking is, is there any time when it's appropriate for a council member to email all of the commissioners in a commission with that particular council member's something?
I would, I don't want to give a categorical statement, but it would be unlikely, and it would be, a better way to do it would be to contact the city administrator. And if there's information that should be shared with the commission, that should be shared through the staff liaison, whoever it is for that commission.
Right.
Would be a better approach.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Or are there any other questions? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that brings us now to the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that anybody wishes to remove?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Well, I have to ask for public comment before that, so nothing to remove, so then I'll go to public comment and see if we have any-
No speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, now you may make your motion.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Moved by Councilmember Bracco and seconded by Councilmember Marks, and this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Almaderas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Blenckley.
Yes. That passed unanimously. All right, that brings us to bids and proposals. We have none. Item 11, 11.1, public hearings. This is a continued, this is our third, actually, public hearing for introduction and first reading of an ordinance adding Chapter 16B sidewalk vending to the Gilroy City Code. Looks like John Biggs is going to be giving us this report.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. John Biggs with your community development department. As the mayor mentioned, this is the third meeting we've had on sidewalk vending regulations. The last meeting we had was a study session with the city council that took place on the 19th of July. During that meeting, there are a number of suggestions by the city council members for things for us to take a look into and go back and evaluate, and then bring back to you an ordinance that included, whether it was appropriate or not, the recommendations and suggestions provided by the city council. And we have done that. And in your packet, we have included both a redlined version, so you can follow the changes that have occurred to the ordinance since you first looked at the regulations, plus a regular version of the ordinance, so you have that for your records. There were a number of modifications or forwarded items at the July, July meeting that the council asked to be included. We've looked at those, and we've included quite a few of those. Some, there were reasons not to include, and I'll go over those when we reach that. To go over the items that have been included in the, in the, the regulations for sidewalk vending in the ordinance, were to incorporate Councilmember Klein's comments, he provided a number of written comments and modifications that we have incorporated into the version of the ordinance you are looking at this evening. You asked that us to take a look into whether we could prohibit vendors from using public utilities, not just electrical outlets that might be in the planters that are located in various public spaces, but also water lines and so forth. So we took a look at that, and we included that in the regulations, so that's included in the ordinance you have in front of you. You also asked us to take a look at the City of Sacramento's standards for clear space on sidewalks, which is to maintain a distance of at least five feet or 50% of the sidewalk width, whichever is greater. We've included that in regulations. We thought that was a good recommendation. Also, you asked us to take a look at Sacramento's standards for customer queuing, requiring that vendors not allow their customers in line to purchase their products, create a situation where the customer queuing creates an obstruction on the sidewalk, another good suggestion that we have included in the ordinance. There was a request to explore the distance between a curb and the sidewalk vending space to account for vehicles that are parking in angled spaces to the curb, and so we've included that. We thought that two feet was an appropriate distance to account for vehicle overhangs parking in the public spaces on street. There was a question about whether or not there should be a separation distance to ATMs for vendors. We thought that was another appropriate suggestion, and we've included that in the code in front of you. And the distance we found that would be most appropriate would be 25 feet. So the 25 feet is a distance that a vendor would have to set up a space from an ATM, so they're not interfering with the operation and function of that ATM. Also, take, asked us to take a look at including some separation distances. One to schools, which is 400 feet, entertainment establishments, and there's some time limits there, I think it's 10 till 2:00 in the morning, of 600 feet. And then also for permitted or special events, the distance of separation of 300 feet. Looked at that, found that it was appropriate and supportable, so we've included that in the ordinance. And then finally, we asked if we could evaluate whether or not it would be appropriate to impose time limits on vendors that match the openings of businesses that were adjacent to the location where they're vending. And given our mixed-use districts, where we have a combination of commercial uses and residential uses, we felt that it would be appropriate to include such a standard in the, the city's vending regulations. So we put in a, a standard in the rules that says that a vendor that is operating in a mixed-use zone needs to shut down at this, basically the same time that the other ongoing businesses on the street are shutting down as well. So they're not, they're occupying public spaces beyond the normal hours of business operation. Not, not the sit, the hours that the city sets, just to make that clarification, but the hours of operation of the business itself. Now for the modifications that were not added, there was a question about whether or not we could prohibit vendors at an open window. And just to clarify, this was a general request. We do have a request, or a condition in the code that prohibits vendors that are generating smoke or steam or have a generator a certain distance from openings, openings in commercial buildings. This was whether any vendor could be, whether or not they were producing those types of annoyances could be located with an open, near an open window. Explore distances where a, there has to be a separation between vendors. 100 feet was stated as an example. Other cities have incorporated greater distances. Whether there needs to be an accessible path of travel to an on-street parking space, and whether we could outright prohibit vendors that were using wood-fired cooking devices or deep-fat frying or, or generators. In taking a look at what other cities have done, and keeping in mind that these, the state standards has to be for health and safety requirements, it didn't appear that, given the Gilroy circumstances, that it was appropriate to include standards like this in the code that you're considering this evening. We did look, a look, take a look at a number of cities, Sacramento, Santa Cruz, Culver City, a couple of other ones as well. And those that have successfully implemented similar conditions to this have done a very good job in their regulations of explaining why it is that they have imposed these conditions. Culver City, for example, notes their normal city population, then it talks about the population of workers that come into the city during a 24-hour period, and then on top of that, talks about the number of visitors to that city, coupled with the narrow width of their sidewalks, all make it appropriate to restrict vendors in locations around the city or certain business districts or require separations to, to vendors. So that's the reason why we have not included these standards in the code. But again, if you feel that there is something supportable, please bring it to our attention, and we will explore that a little bit more. The council also had some questions about vending and things in particular. The first thing had to do with the control of alcohol, especially establishments, establishments that serve alcohol only, things such as bar and taverns. What are other cities doing to control those? And in, in honesty, the, what we found is that other cities are doing very much what the City of Gilroy does right now, which is, if you're an establishment that is a bar or a tavern, or let's say, a microbrewery or a winery tasting room, there is a conditional use permit that is required for those types of establishments. Gilroy, a bar or tavern requires a conditional use permit from our planning commission. If you have a, a microbrewery or a wine tasting, and microbreweries for, for beers that are brewed onsite, wineries are for wines produced in Santa Clara County, those are considered at a, an administrative use permit hearing. So it's done at the staff level rather than going to the, to the planning commission for consideration. So we do have controls for that. If the council would like us to explore some other types of regulations to deal with these types of establishments, I think that would be direction from the council that we would have to go back and take a look at, because it's not on the agenda for discussion this evening. And then finally, the council wanted to know about historic districts in Gilroy. And as I'm sure you're all aware, the city's downtown is a historic district. There's actually a historic downtown specific plan for Gilroy. And it does include a lot of policies and rules and programs, but all of those policies and rules and programs are really related to the buildings themselves, the historic buildings, how they can be altered or changed or added onto or modified or even demolished or new buildings constructed in their place. It doesn't really provide a lot of guidance for the city in terms of how the public spaces or the streets or the sidewalks can be used. There was a mention about the City of Sacramento being able to prohibit sidewalk vending in downtown. It's, it's older historic downtown. It's not an outright provision in Sac, Old Town Sacramento that is, is required. It's one that takes into account in certain aspects, the narrow width of the sidewalk, and says that in, in cases where the sidewalk width would be less than six feet because of the placement of a vendor, then those instances, the vendors are prohibited, but no, no blanket prohibition of sidewalk vendors in historic Sacramento downtown. We just wanted to also reiterate, there are options for addressing issues or concerns that come up with sidewalk vending in real time. Specifically, we can condition the approval or the permit for a sidewalk vendor based on information that we have. If we have, let's say, certain information that a certain sidewalk location is not going to provide adequate width or access, we can condition it to say, you can't be approved to put your vending device here, you have to be placing it in another location. There's also the city council ability to come in and adopt a resolution that puts in place other conditions or, or standards that apply to sidewalk vending. And then finally, and this is probably the, you know, the biggest, the biggest tool that we have, we could come back and amend, amend the sidewalk vending regulations themselves if, again, we find that there are issues that are related to sidewalk vending as, as we go through and start to begin issuing permits. Next steps, if the city council introduces the ordinance this evening, we will be coming back to you on the 21st of August with a ordinance for you to consider for adoption. That ordinance will become effective 30 days following the adoption, and then we will be returning to the city council in September. I think it's your second meeting in September with a recommendation for sidewalk vending fees. And that wraps up our, my report this evening. Our recommendation, again, is that you introduce the ordinance this evening, and we will bring back a ordinance on the 21st of September for adoption. Happy to answer any questions that the city council may have.
Thank you, John. Councilmembers, if you could please, line, I see, I see Councilmember Bracco there, but Councilmember, if you don't mind, I'm always going last. I'd like to just go first this one time. Okay, thank you, John, for that report, and thank you for, I know, all the work that goes into this, but given what I know, the council majority, you know, directed at the last meeting, I'm going to push back some on number 12 in the staff report, which is the generators, wood, wood-fire burning devices and deep frying devices. And I know you said you need certain direction, health and safety, and here's what I would say to that, and then it would be for the council to, you know, either support or not support. But our public sidewalk, sidewalks are for the public, right? I mean, we, we've spent so much time and energy trying to improve our downtown so that people will go downtown. That's what we're trying to do, to get more people down there. And a sidewalk vendor doesn't have, then, even, even in the location where they've met all these conditions, doesn't make it their private space, it's still using public space. So if, if, if the public can't comfortably walk in our downtown, which is what our downtown is for, to be able to stroll and use our sidewalks, that's why they're public sidewalks, without going through smoke that is as unhealthy and disastrous as what comes from wood burning or from charcoal- or from charcoal, or if I have to worry about getting splashed with hot grease and getting a burn on my hand like some cars have suffered, then to me, those are absolutely things that are health and safety and make it so that I personally wouldn't go down there, which is the opposite. Then now you're trading my ability, not mine, but the, the community's ability to enjoy the downtown for something that is a health and safety. I mean, this is, we're not talking about someone who's just laid stuffed animals down, and I can walk by that no problem, or flowers. But these particular things, generators that emit gases, that, you know, things you don't want to breathe, I don't understand why the, the public, why I would, because it would make me just not go. And that's not what we're trying to do here.
Right. Well, we, we hear your concerns. You know, we've given some additional thought to this, and I think that, you know, if the council would like us to take a look at a, a draft, standard or condition that we could float for you to add to the regulations, we, we certainly are prepared to do that.
Okay. Well, I'll leave it at that, and we'll go, go down. Okay, so, oh.
Can I speak for a second?
Certainly.
Yeah. With respect to, to that, the, the state statute, as we know, is very protective of the vendors. Nonetheless, the city is allowed by ordinance or resolution to adopt additional regulations regarding time, place, and manner of sidewalk vending if the requirements are directly related to objective health, safety, or welfare concerns. So to the extent that the council may feel that this particular item, item 12, that there are health, safety, or welfare concerns, then, I know John, John has been thinking about this, to the extent you identify facts that would support that, like the ones the mayor just mentioned, I think those could support a finding that would justify imposing that ban. But we, we have to have that discussion, though. We have to have that discussion about the, about what facts are there that would support such a ban.
Okay. Councilmember Bracco.
Yes, I, I agree with the mayor. I thought at our last meeting, we said, no generators.
I did too.
And then they're back in there. And then on page four, number 21 says 48 inches, and we said 50%. And then number 28, it says different. There's, to me, I, I saw that those conflicting things in here, you know, e- either it's 48 inches or it's 50%. And then on number 28, on the overhang, I actually went out and measured some cars in our yard, all different years, and they average about three feet. So maybe we can bump that up to three feet.
Certainly.
But I, I am concerned about the differing numbers, because that makes things confusing.
Yeah, it's, it, it is making for a, a challenge for a vendor, and I think for staff to verify that you're complying with all these various components. And each of those three standards that you mentioned addresses something different. One, the 48 inches addresses accessibility. The, the five feet, or 50% references the width of the sidewalk. The other dimension, I think it was 48 inches as well, addresses distances to different locations or items that could be in the sidewalk. So there's all of these things that have weaved their way into this ordinance that we're attempting to address in a, a, the attempt was to make for a, a kind of common sense way of, of dealing with these situations, but it becomes very complicated when you're trying to address a number of varying, different factors that are out there in the public realm.
But I think if you measure the sidewalks, the 50% covers it. It, it's more than twice as big as 48 inches, the sidewalks.
Well, that's correct, but then in that 50% space, it doesn't tell you where in that, that, that depth or width of the sidewalk a vendor could be located. So then you need to begin looking at making sure that you're providing appropriate separation distances to that vending space from, let's say, a lamppost or a fire hydrant, or to an access point to a building or to a, a fire exit.
Well, to make it more understanding, how about if we put 50% or minimum 48 inches?
Um, we could do that, although you kind of lose that, that ability to have in your code that says, you know, this is intended to prohibit congestion. This is intended to prohibit specifically accessibility requirements. This is intended to make sure that the width of the sidewalk is appropriate for the volume of pedestrians that are going up and down the street. So.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember, items 21 and 26 are the ones that address specifically what you're saying. It's 21 and 26. Am I not understanding your reason why, I mean, to me, I had the same question, actually, asked the city attorney earlier today, but I don't see any harm coming from just having both of them in there. They're both requirements.
I, I was just talking about making stuff simple.
Making it simple, yeah. I've tried that, but. Okay, so, okay. All right. Councilmember Armendaris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at the restricted vending times and locations, in particular 4B6, where it addresses 600 feet of any entertainment establishment, for example, clubs within the hours of 10:00 PM and 2:30 AM. And that number seems egregious to me, 600 feet. Can you tell me more about the reasoning behind that and how we arrived at that? Was the fire department consulted?
The fire department has been consulted, and this number actually came from another city's regulations that, you know, had done a little bit more research into their experience with having vendors in this proximity to establishments like the one that's, that's in the code. So that's, that's where the 600 feet came from.
Just because I think with the number of clubs that we have downtown and drinking establishments, winery, I mean breweries and bars, having food there for folks to, to eat before they get behind the wheel, I think is, is a benefit. It's a plus. So I, and I think with this amount, like 600 feet is, is basically, it's prohibitive, right? It's keeping vendors from being downtown for any reason, especially with those hours. And I just think it's, it's disparit treatment in terms of, there's no restaurants open at that hour anyway, and they are providing a benefit to our community by being there when folks are getting out of, out of these establishments and where many of them have been drinking. So I, I would like to see that number reduced to something more reasonable that can still keep people safe in case of an incident, but, but just doesn't seem so, so prohibitively, like I said, egregious in terms of the number.
Okay. Before I go to Councilmember Klein, I'd like to ask a question on that item, particular item that Councilmember Armendaris was asking. Can you name for me, John, the, what constitutes in your mind an entertainment establishment in downtown Gilroy today?
It would be, I'm not going to name names, but it'd be an establishment that provides food and drink and entertainment.
Oh, it provides food?
Food, drink, entertainment, yes.
Okay.
My, my concept.
That's the, okay, that's the entertainment club. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Okay. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Klein.
I'd just like to say, staff did a great job with this as far as just a lot of information and whatnot. The only thing I could add to it, again, I just noticed in looking at it, the number, appropriate number, so you can see it, it's just a little wording. It was 16B.6 and 8. Just a little wording in there. It says, "Commercial general liability, automobile and workers' compensation, insurance policies, or other such policy as the office of the risk manager of the city of Gilroy shall require." There's just a little nuance in there. I'd like to see "or" after insurance policies instead of "or" the words "and any other such policy as the office of the risk manager of the city of Gilroy shall require." Just something a little simple nuance to it. Other than that, that's good with everything.
John, is there a reason from staff why that would not be good?
I think it was just our wording at the time we drafted.
Okay, so that would be fine.
We're comfortable with that change.
We're comfortable. That's what I was asking. You're comfortable with it. Okay. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Yes. Okay, so 600 feet from an entertainment establishment, that would be all of our, our restaurants, correct? Zol City Hall has karaoke. Melius has music. Tempo has music and entertainment. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So 600 feet are two city blocks, correct?
About two city blocks, yes.
Okay, so that, that really limits it. Will vendors be assigned the same spot every week?
The stationary vendors, when they apply for their permit, are being given a permit for a specific location. So yes.
So the city then would map all these locations out, keeping in mind all the entertainment spots, right?
We are going to need to do that, correct.
Okay. Now I have, you know, a lot of compassion for the vendors who are really trying to make a living. However, we have restaurants with employees who are trying to make a living. And sitting up here, I have spoken to all the restaurants. I've spoken to the Downtown Business Association, and they are pretty adamant that they would like no vending on Monterey Street, but put it in a parking lot where all the vendors can be. Other cities have done this. It has worked. People will walk to them, and that would also allow them to have their other items that we're thinking of eliminating on Monterey Street, such as what the mayor has suggested. I'm really concerned that this ordinance does not have a designated area for them, because in my mind, no matter what the inches are that you can walk, it is still going to be congested if people are walking down. You are going to be dodging some of the equipment. I would love to see it come back with respect to all of our downtown businesses, where we look at a designated section for all the vendors to go. And that's really, that would be a real important deal breaker for me, to see how we can help these restaurants out. I think that was, oh, there was one other question I had, because I think a few weeks ago, code enforcement ran into this problem where someone was asked to break down their, their vending station, and they refused, because they said it would take them an hour, and they only had an hour left, so they wouldn't do it. Is a rule, is a law going to be put into place that if a code enforcement officer says they have to break it down because of whatever, maybe not having permits or whatever, they don't have the option to argue with the code enforcement officer, but they would be given a certain amount of time, and if not, it would be impounded?
That, that is a possibility. The code compliance officers or a police officer would have the ability to issue a citation. There's also a provision in this code that allows us to confiscate a vendor's vending devices if they are not complying with a direction from a police officer or a code compliance officer. I think those are going to be actions of last resort, simply because we've, we've always tried to take the opportunity to encourage compliance rather than take enforcement action. But those remain available to, to staff to, to take care of, or, or tools that's just staff to use.
And has the city taken into, has given any thought to how code enforcement is going to do it? You know, are they going to be real, you know, on it for the first, you know, month or so to make sure everyone's complying and then just sporadic checks? Or is it going to be complaint-based?
We are giving a lot of thought to that. And in fact, as part of your second meeting in September, when we bring back the fees, we're also going to be bringing forward for council consideration the code enforcement or compliance program. So we'll have more details about that for you in September.
So then in reality, this really would not go into effect until the end of October, correct?
Yes, let me just do, yeah.
And then we hit winter.
In the middle of September is when it would take effect.
So then we'll be up and running perfectly by spring of next year, realistically.
We're going to be trying to make sure that happens before then, doing what we can with the resources we have.
Weather permitting, right? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to go to public, I'd like to open the public hearing before going to council members again, if that would be okay, and then we'll come back to council. So I am opening the public hearing at 7, I'm going to say 7:45, because that's what's about to change, 7:45 PM. And Ty, if you would please call the speakers.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one speaker at the moment, and it's Terrence Fugazi. I'm anticipating more speakers here at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council and Madam Mayor. I'm really encouraged to see how this matter's gone through the process in the city in terms of getting dictated from the state certain things that we must do and going through the whole process of staff coming up with the ordinance as they did, and then the public meeting, which I attended with all of the, the people from restaurants to the vendors and everything. It was, it's incredibly encouraging to see how much time and effort we're putting forward to try to get something right rather than just get it done. The city itself, for the years I've been here, the amount of vendors and, and whatnot that are popping up everywhere seems more and more and more. And downtown is, it's like the Wild West of, of cooktops and everything. So it's, it is definitely, you know, the time to do something like this. Our downtown is getting better and better, and we're on the precipice of really making it great. And, you know, as far as businesses are concerned, and really kind of the equality under the law, making these street vendors do similar things to what restaurants and other establishments have to do in order to be a compliant business is a, is an incredibly good thing. And I think it's going to make them more involved also in city and everything else. So at the end of all of this, I know that everybody, from the restaurant owners to other businesses to the street vendors, are going to be a little bit unhappy. Everybody will be, and that will mean that we've probably got something just about right, because whenever you put something together, a contract or anything else, everybody's going to be a little bit unhappy. You've probably got it where you need it to be. Having heard about the smoke and whatnot, this is something I did mention at the community meeting to Mr. Biggs, and, you know, having a mother who had COPD and breathing issues and whatnot, I absolutely agree with you, Mayor, that there's no way I would bring her downtown if somebody's, you know, having a barbecue right on the small sidewalk. It's absolutely a health, health issue to have that downtown. And as far as generators, generators are completely unnecessary with today's power sources. You can go to Costco and buy a, a non-generator battery power source right now. You can even make your own with a battery and an inverter. So for what they need to power, it's entirely possible. Anyway, I just wanted to congratulate all you guys. You're doing so much hard work on this, and as well as city staff and everything. And it's been good to see it come to fruition and get enforced. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Ron Kirkish.
Good evening again, Mayor, council and community. And Tom, you actually started this off-class meeting, and I really appreciate it that you brought this forward. The issue regarding councilperson or councilwoman Mark's question, if somebody decides that they're going to flout the law, they're not going to obey. Well, put some teeth in the ordinance, such as, you know, these people have to be licensed. Well, if they aren't going to obey the rules, then you pull their license, and then they cannot do their business on our sidewalk or in our city. I think it's pretty simple that a license, getting a license, I don't know if it's right or a privilege, but in either case, we cannot put up with vendors who are not going to obey our law or are going to resist our police officers when, when trying to enforce our ordinance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I see no others on my screen. Are there any more speakers?
No others. Speaker, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:49 PM and come back to council. Councilmember Armendaris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering, in regards to what Councilmember Mark said about a, a designated site or an area, when I brought it up at our first hearing, I believe we were told that it wasn't allowed per the state ordinance to designate an, an area. If we were to offer a, to offer such a site, right, to offer some city property for a night market or where vendors could be, offer it but not obligate it, would, is that something folks would support? Because I, I did meet with over 20 vendors, and they were in support of that. They would be happy to have that as an opportunity for them, even if it was out of downtown, right? And we do have city property available for that. So I'm just wondering. So I'm just wondering, is that, is that something that would still be available if it was offered, not obligated?
The city could definitely offer a site like that, maybe even provide some incentives to encourage people to go to those locations, things such as lighting or trash collection and so forth. But the downside to that is that the state legislation still provides for vendors to operate on city sidewalks and pathways. And unless you were to come up with findings that prohibit vendors in specific locations, you can't tell them, no, you can't participate or have a vending device in the downtown, or you can't bend in the downtown. So it's, yes, you could on one hand, but the door is still open, given what the state has done to allowing vendors to have their devices on city sidewalks.
But language could be written to incentivize them being there versus being downtown.
The city could certainly create a program, find a location, and say, this is a, you know, this is what the city has done to provide you as vendors and the community that want to partake in what vendors have to offer as a location for, you know, gatherings, much like a lot of communities have done for food trucks and so forth.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Yeah, just to emphasize John's point, the state law says, quote, "A local authority shall not require a sidewalk vendor to operate within a specific part, within specific parts of the public right-of-way, except when that restriction is directly related to objective health, safety, or welfare concerns." In addition, the state law says, "For purposes of this section, perceived community animus or economic competition does not constitute an objective health, safety, or welfare concern." So as John said, we would have to make findings if there are to be location restrictions.
Yes, I didn't hear the council member, though, asking for us to prohibit it anywhere. She was asking, can we do it in addition to, so that they would have the option of voluntarily going to a particular location.
I think the answer would be we could do that.
Right.
But as John points out, that doesn't mean we could say, well, if you don't want to go there, you can't be in some other part of the city.
Correct, that's what voluntary, right. That's what I understand voluntary to mean, right. I just personally think our hands are full with this, because we have to do this. So I am not in support of developing a program in addition to this, but that's just me, because I think that's a whole nother level that I personally think is better addressed when we get to food trucks. Because I think something like that may be what we can do with food trucks, and then that area can include, we can see about that, whatever that area is, also including other kind of vendors. I just don't see that as part of this ordinance. I also don't see the, as part of this ordinance, the, addressing the CUP process that we go through as a city that could make food a requirement in alcohol-only establishments. It's not part of this, but it is certainly something that I am going to suggest to this council, that we have staff bring back, so that we don't have this issue of alcohol-only establishments that are soliciting food vendors to be in front of their locations and perpetuating this problem. Okay, councilmember Marks.
I have a question, please.
I have a question for Andy. How is it that Carmel is able to get away with it by putting them all in the park as you enter Carmel on Ocean Avenue, and Selena spans it completely downtown?
Well, those may be good questions, but I haven't looked at those, so we'd have to try to understand their thinking. And it may depend on their individual sidewalks and their individual public rights as well.
Okay, so maybe it's something to look into, and see if we can offer that.
Well, again, if we can get through what this ordinance is going to be, that's the only way we're going to know. How many, how many vendors then do we have? You know, what are the issues that then come after this is passed? And if it is, if it is that sidewalks are just too narrow, and there's no, then we will need to look at an alternate location.
And that would be fine as long as we did it soon? I mean, within a certain time period. I wouldn't want to be looking at this again next summer when everything is happening, and then we have the restaurants angry again with us. So, and it's going to be really hard to tell in October, because realistically, the rains will be coming, the colder weather, and a lot of the vendors won't be there.
What I'm saying is, we wouldn't be looking at this again. We would be in addition to. It would be in addition.
It would be in addition, but what I'm saying is...
Okay.
They want it in place now, in the fall, for next year. And they don't want to have us dealing with it for two, three months, and then they lose another summer.
Mm-hmm. John?
If I may, I really believe that the rules you have in front of you this evening, once adopted and implemented, are going to kind of, they're going to allow a sorting of vendors to take place. And there's only going to be a few spots within our downtown and across the city, actually, where vendors are going to be able to comply with all of these separation requirements and distances from different locations. And, you know, we're going to start looking at these applications as they come in, and we'll have a better idea of it. Councilmember Marks, she brought up a good question about whether we're going to be mapping these and knowing where our entertainment locations are at in the downtown. I think we're going to have to do that, just to make it part of, you know, a good review process and an easy review process for an applicant, but be able to show them, you know, quickly how they can get a permit or areas that are already occupied. I just, I really think this is going to sort out a lot of what we're seeing in the downtown right now.
And maybe that would be, and maybe what you're suggesting is going to be very good, because the restaurants who are most concerned will be within that 600 feet.
Correct.
So they will not have to deal with it.
Correct.
All right, we can go ahead and give it a go, and see what happens.
Okay, so I don't see any other councilmember names on here. The public hearing is closed. I'd like to start with suggesting, unless another council wants to start, with suggesting that we go with the ordinance that staff has suggested with at least two changes that I've heard. One is the two feet to three feet that councilmember Bracco was saying at the curb level. And the other is to prohibit generators, smoke, and whatever is smoke. This here says wood-fired, but it's whatever produces smoke that is hazardous to your health. Or anything using hot oil that can splatter onto people passing by, or to cars that are parked there. Those are the things that I would like to see prohibited, because they are, in my mind, absolutely health and safety things.
Would it be beneficial for the council just to review some language along those lines that would prohibit? It would be a standard that we can include?
Would it be better for the council?
Yes, it would be. It would be helpful if you'd revise your language.
Well, since staff didn't do that for us since the last meeting, then, okay.
So here's a standard that we kind of, we thought this might be an issue, so we came up with this.
Oh, good.
We thought that you could consider and say, this is a good addition or not a good addition to the standards in the code.
Okay, well, is wood-fired cooking the only thing? What about if someone comes with briquettes and, you know, puts gasoline on the briquettes and lights the fire?
Technically, they're wood.
They're wood.
Oh, those are wood, too? Okay, as long as it covers it. Because there are those of us who are concerned about inhaling smoke and choose not to go where smoke is.
Understood.
Okay. Okay.
I think it'd be helpful if you read that into the record, John.
Sure. So this would be a standard that we'd add to the sidewalk vendor regulations, and it states, and this is in regards to prohibiting generators, wood-fired cooking devices, and those that involve deep fat frying. The standard on the board says, "For the health, safety, and welfare of the community and pedestrians when using its public sidewalks, paths, and parks, cooking methods that involve generators, deep fat frying, or wood-fired cooking devices, which present fire, smoke, burn, and slipping hazards, are prohibited. This limitation does not prohibit sidewalk vendors from using other cooking methods to heat or prepare foods."
Okay.
Can I make one suggestion?
Sure.
That the language be changed to say, "Generators and cooking methods." Because generator might be used for other purposes, too, rather than cooking.
Right, good change.
Okay. Okay, so does that have, so those are two things that I said, council, okay, so that's my motion? I guess that's what I'm doing, is making that motion with those two changes to come back. Were there any others that I missed? Okay, well then, so does someone second? I have to have a second. Oh, did you have a comment? We have a motion and a second. Is there any more comment?
Okay, we actually need a motion to read the ordinance by title only, though.
Okay, let's do that first.
With the knowledge being that the proposed ordinance for introduction is the one that State Department made.
Okay, so I made the motion. Councilmember Bracco seconded to read the ordinance by title only and waived further reading of the ordinance. That's a roll call vote.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Blinkley.
Yes, okay, that passes unanimously with one absent. And so number two, then, is the motion to...
Madam Mayor, I do need to read the title.
Oh, sorry, right. Read it, sorry.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy adding Chapter 16B sidewalk vending to the City Gilroy Code. Gilroy City Code, sorry about that.
Okay. Okay, so now is the motion to introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 16B sidewalk vending to the Gilroy City Code, which provides permit requirements and standards for sidewalk vending, and this is including the changes that we just made, adding the language that was up there, changing the two feet to three feet. And this would also mean changing, did you already know this, or do you want to say it? One of these numbers in here, number nine, 16B point 3A9, would also need to change, because it currently reads, "Vendors using a generator approved in conjunction with the sidewalk vending permit and those that emit smoke shall not be located within 25 feet of open buildings." So that now either goes away, or how do you change that?
That gets changed to this last one that you liked.
Okay.
And item eight also refers to generators.
Oh, right, and item eight as well.
Okay.
Both eight and nine either should be eliminated or revised.
Okay, so, yeah. Oh, yes, and the little bit of wording on the insurance thing.
Correct, change the order.
Right. Okay, so it'll be for staff to go through and make sure that everything then is consistent with what, with the changes we just made. Okay, so I made that motion. Is that seconded by councilmember Bracco? Okay, and that is also a roll call vote.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Blinkley.
Yes, all right, that's unanimous, minus one. So is this the time, then, to ask the council if we want to direct staff to come back with how we handle CUPs and alcohol-only establishments not serving any food? If I'm alone in that, that's fine, but if there's a council majority that wants to...
Wouldn't that be future council initiated?
I thought that earlier, but I asked Andy, and he said no, so...
I think because it's related to this item and presented in the staff report, it's merely coming back a direction to staff to come back with a report. So I think it's okay to discuss it now, if you like. Not discuss it, but order it.
Right, but, right, because it was part of this.
Or it can be agendized for a future item.
Okay, well, I'd like to do it, I mean, have staff do it when they're thinking about this now. I don't know how, why that should be that difficult when it's just saying you have to have some food. Okay, I think this is just a thumbs-up thing, right?
You can do it that way. It's a direction to staff.
It's a direction to staff. So do we have a council majority is what I need to know? One, two, three, four, yeah, it's all of us.
Okay.
Okay, good. And that would be on a go-forward basis, right? We can't change the existing CUPs?
Well, we can't discuss it now, but generally speaking, that would be correct. The expectation would be it would only apply to new things. But there's no proposal yet, so it's premature.
Okay, thank you, everybody. That was a process. All right, that brings us to item 11.2, consideration of the report of abatement of weeds and refuse within the City of Gilroy and adoption of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy confirming the imposition of assessment liens against the land. Chief Wyatt or Jonathan? Chief Wyatt's doing this report, okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Your microphone.
How's that? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not going to read the entire item, but I'll summarize some of the key points of it. Tonight's agenda item covers the third and final city council activity for 2023 in the weed abatement program process. The county weed abatement program provides the weed abatement listing, notification letters, lot inspections, documentation, and arranges abatement services if needed. The county and the city conducted inspections after the May 15 deadline. Property owners were able to communicate directly with the county and fire prevention staff if they had problems getting their lot abated. There has been a gradual decrease in the total number of properties on the weed abatement list. Just for instance, back in 2016, there were 297 properties. Currently, there are 161 on the list associated with the staff report. The list has been hovering around 160 properties for the past several years, but as properties become developed and the total number is, and that will result in the total number expected to decrease. The property owners listed for fine assessment were sent a copy of the proposed assessment against their property in July of this year. They have had the opportunity to call, email, and meet with County Weed Abatement Program Manager, Mo Cumery, and he's here in the audience. He can answer your questions a little bit later. Or the fire prevention staff on or before August 7 to discuss, object, or obtain additional information about their assessment. To date, no person has contacted either the Fire Prevention Bureau or the County Weed Abatement Program Manager. Any property owner that has not raised an objection or has not provided a substantial reason why they should not be assessed still have another opportunity tonight to raise objections at tonight's council meeting. In conclusion, it is the recommendation that council adopt a resolution allowing the assessment of fees
Well, the program's policy countywide is that, once a property goes on the program, it remains on until it demonstrates three consecutive years of voluntary compliance. At the end of the third year, it would be removed, and no other fees would be assessed after that.
Three years?
Yes.
And is there a particular date or time that, like a point in time that they're assessed? Or is it just year-round? Do you know what I mean? Like, when does somebody come and assess it?
Well, we're going to inspect the properties in Gilroy after the May 15 deadline. They can be inspected multiple times throughout the year, because we're looking at something else, or because somebody asked us to. But the inspection fee that's to be assessed for this, the inspection fee itself would only be assessed once.
Okay. All right, thank you for clarifying. Okay, I have a question. I don't know which one of you it's for, but Chief, you were saying that, that's great, we have fewer numbers of properties on the list. What I'd like to know is, do we also have fewer dollars on the list? Because of the ones on this list, we're still over $120,000 in fees. That's still a lot, a lot of assessments that we have to do. Has that gone down?
It has gone down. If you look at the numbers that you have, quite a few of the properties are just paying $92, which is the inspection fee. Every parcel pays that, pass or fail. Then you have the parcels that don't do the work in a timely manner. We send them a notice, they're charged the failed inspection fee, or work order processing fee, which is 519, which would bring that total to 611. Where the big numbers come in, which is, a lot of those, keep in mind, would be railroads, PG&E, those.
I saw that, Union Pacific's the worst.
Right, which are ones in which we have to perform the abatement. Some of those properties are large, and can't be done with heavy equipment. So I can't put tractors on the railroad property. It has to be done by weed whackers, and that, of course, is more expensive than running a mower. So that brings your average way up, but the reality is, most of the privately owned parcels, the fees came down.
But do you know if in total, they've come down? The total of everybody?
I don't have those figures with me. I do believe that they have, but I'd have to go back and actually do that. If you'd like, I can forward that information.
That's okay. I can actually look at it in our staff, in our report from last year. Thank you. Just wondered if you knew. Okay, if there are no other questions from the council, I'm going to open the public hearing, because this is a public hearing, 8:11 PM. Do we have any speakers?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing at 8:11 PM, and coming back to council to see if...
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bracco, seconded by Councilmember Armandares.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Blinkley?
Yes, right, unanimous with one absent. Okay, unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of new business. This is introduction, okay, should I read it? Okay, I'll let Jimmy even read what this is, because it's turned out to be something a little bit different than we have. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The agenda item you have for this evening, we are actually going to ask you not to accept the staff recommendation, which is to motion to read the ordinance and to introduce an ordinance, another ordinance as well. And the reason being is that there's two pieces to this ordinance, and one of them is not accurate. And since the one piece isn't accurate, we can't have you adopt an ordinance with half of it being inaccurate. The inaccurate part is that we had made a proposal of a council to eliminate the July meeting for an actual legislative break, which is very common in most cities. We had changed the city's code, section code 2.13, without realizing that section 408 of the charter mandates that we have one meeting per month, all throughout the year. So we have a conflict in that. So we're going to ask council not to consider that. The second part is that we will be bringing the second part back to you, because the timeline's given by the registrar of voters for the city to certify and see the next council. It typically cannot be met in that first meeting in December. So we typically will cancel the first meeting, schedule a special second meeting in December, and then place new council members in their positions. That is mandated by charter, that we do it that way. So that is something we will bring back to council. The reason why we didn't pull this item entirely off is because I thought it was important to get some feedback from council on what they'd like to see in their summer months. As I mentioned, most legislative bodies, City of Morgan Hill, other cities I've been in, take the entire month of July off. We can't do that, but there may be a path forward to where we can get an extended break by perhaps canceling the second meeting in June, holding a late meeting in July, or whatever the wishes of the council. If you just want to leave it as is, we can do that, too. If council wants to, and I may recommend this either way, is that we may want to look at having a minor charter amendment, because we can't do a lot with our meetings, and it's always better to have that in an ordinance where council, each council can decide how they want to do their meetings, how they want to meet, when they want their breaks. But we don't have that available to that for us tonight. So in summary, I ask that you don't make a motion to read the ordinance, and not to introduce the ordinance either, and that we will bring back the registrar of voters requirement that we feel you have to do just to meet the charter. And then the second piece is your summer break, which I would appreciate any feedback we could get from council, or just the feedback not to do anything, whatever the wishes of the council are. That concludes my report.
Okay.
I like Jimmy's suggestions on how to get around the charter language for now. Maybe for next summer, cancel the second June meeting, have the July meeting later in the month, so that folks get, you know, a solid amount of time on the break.
Okay.
Something like, to look into language like that.
Yeah. I would suggest keeping the second June meeting, but that the July, which is usually around June 20th or something like that, and having the July meeting at the very end of the month, because then it's close to the beginning of August. And, I mean, given that we have to have a meeting in July, I'm not one for changing the charter and letting each council decide what it's going to do. I think we are here for the public, and it ought to be set in stone what the public can expect from the council. So I, my suggestion would be to, that still gives you a month off.
But then you have the end of July meeting, you turn right around and have the first meeting in August. You have two meetings right in a row.
Right, just like we do when it's Labor Day and Memorial Day. It's the same thing. We don't have the meeting on that Monday, not Memorial Day, but Labor Day. We have the second one in that. So I'm just saying, since we have to have it in July, you get more of a break if you do it at the very end of July than if you do it at the beginning of July, which is what we've been doing. Because then you lose the time. If you're talking about a break, you lose the time from the second June meeting, a month till then. You can get a full month, maybe even five weeks, out of that if you do it. So that would be my suggestion, but that is just my suggestion there. And then the one for December, I think, is going to come back, saying that we have the meeting on the second Monday. I think that's what's going to happen, because of the registrar of voters. So instead of meeting on the first Monday, and the third, that we then always vote to make the second, we'll just have the second, and that's consistent with our charter, because then we still have one meeting in December. So is that the direction of the council, then, to do end of July, and let staff come back with what it needs to be in December, knowing that it's probably going to be the second in December, and we won't have a meeting on the first Monday of December?
Sorry?
Everybody good with that? There's your direction, then.
Could we push meetings in August instead of pushing?
Again, I just, we're here for the pub, yeah, you know. Yeah, okay. Because otherwise, we do that, too, after Labor Day and all these other things that...
Can you repeat my direction?
Yes, the direction is that we make our July meeting. We keep, everything's the same until we get to July. But the July meeting, instead of being at the beginning of the month, is at the end of the month. Okay? And then December is whatever it comes back needing to be from the registrar of voters, which we know is likely the second Monday. Okay? But everything's still staying on Mondays. Right, yeah. Okay, now we're on to city administrator reports.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
We do need to take public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jimmy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick report on some technology upgrades that we've been doing, and some things that are upcoming. As you're well aware, we did close a portion of City Hall during June for an entire week to implement what's called the Gilroy Online Permitting System. It's GOPermit, and that was a very successful implementation. And it now enables our customers to do all phases of their permit application process for building permits, remodels, things like that, completely online. It also allows them to track the progress of the application. They'll see directly who it's with, what date they received it. It's a very clear record. And then they're also able to schedule and track their inspections. They don't have to call building any longer. They can do it online and pick a calendar date, and know exactly when that's going to occur. So that's a, that's a very significant improvement for us. I will tell you, kind of, unfortunately, we were way behind, because our system was about 20 years old, and our staff made the effort to really dive into this and get this finished. So that was the second piece of the ERP system that council approved. And then the other benefit of this system is that it allows individuals to pay online as well for their permit fees. You don't have to come into City Hall if you don't want to at all. We'd love to see you, but that's fine, too, if you want to do everything from home. And in 2020 as well, council approved that we can do credit card payments and pass those fees on, credit card payment fees on to the purchaser, like you see whenever you do your DMV renewals or anything like that. And so that's at 2.9% of the charge. You don't have to do it that way. You still can bring your payment in if you don't want to pay the fees, but just remember, the city does not receive the fees. It is the credit card companies that charge that. And for many years, the city has not passed that on, and that was something that we did bring to council back in 2020 to get that approved. It's just we needed to wait for the software to be able to do that. The second piece that I wanted to talk to council about as well is utility billing. And that was another piece of our ERP system that is gone live. And if you have a water account in town, you now know that we have a different system as well, and it's part of our process to integrate everything into that one financial system. Those payments from that can also be done with a credit card as well, or you can do an e-check payment option for just a dollar. Again, the city does not receive those fees, but those do get passed on. And that will be going live very soon. So we now have the ability to have folks pay their utility bills, get their permits completely online, and completely with a credit card or an e-check if they so choose. This has been a very big move for us. It's really gotten us into the 21st century, and I want to thank council support, actually, way back in about 2018, when we started this project. And now we're kind of wrapping it up and getting all the benefits, you know, becoming more efficient and enabling people to do things, I guess, in their jammies at home if they really want to. The next piece of this that we waited on is not so much the information, technology upgrade, it is now our water and sewer rate updates. We have not modified our rates in over five years. I would almost bet you we're the only city in Santa Clara County that has not changed rates in the last five years, but our cost through valley water for just raw water has gone up. So we will be bringing that to council very shortly, with rate adjustments that will also help pay for this additional technology that we're utilizing. So we have a lot going on in the back end of our operations to get us caught up to the 21st century, but I'm really proud of our team, who has put a lot of hours in and had a lot of challenges with COVID. But I think we're well on our way in making it a better customer experience for our residents. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, city attorneys reports.
I think you've heard enough from me tonight, so I have no further report.
Thanks. All right, then, with that, we are adjourned at 8:21 PM. Thanks, everybody.